And whereas, fire is a serious public safety concern both locally and nationally, and homes are the locations where people are at greatest risk from fire. And according to the NFPA, home fires killed 3,655 people in the United States in 2018. And whereas, when the smoke alarm sounds, Hutchinson residents may have less than two minutes to escape to safety, and residents who have planned and practiced a home fire escape plan are more prepared and will therefore be more likely to survive a fire. And whereas, residents should make a home escape plan, drawing a map of each level of the home, showing all doors and windows, and should practice the home fire escape plan with everyone in the household at least twice a year during day and night. And residents should get out and stay out, never going back inside the home for people, pets, or things. And whereas, our residents are responsive to public education measures and are able to take action to increase their safety from fire, especially in their homes. And whereas, the 2020 Fire Prevention Week theme, "Serve Up Fire Safety in the Kitchen", effectively serves to remind us that we need to take personal steps to increase our safety from fire. Now therefore, I, Jade Pyrosté-Carvalho, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, do hereby proclaim October 4 through 10, 2020, as Fire Prevention Week. And I urge all the people in Hutchinson to be aware of their surroundings, look for available ways out in the event of a fire or other emergency, respond when the smoke alarm sounds by exiting the building immediately, and to support the many public safety activities and efforts of Hutchinson's Fire and Emergency Services during Fire Prevention Week 2020. Do you like to say a few words?
Oh, just thank you for this. I hope everybody can stick around after the city council meeting. We'll be outside giving you a demonstration. We have a burn trailer out there. We can set both sides on fire, so you can see how fast fire grows in your house. One side is sprinkled, the other side is not, and one side has a smoke detector, so you can also see how effective those are. So I hope you can join us after the meeting.
Okay. Thank you so much. Do not be alarmed if you see a fire outside City Hall. It is intentional. Okay, the next proclamation is for Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and Donna Davis, Executive Director of Bright House, will be joining me at the podium. Whereas, domestic violence is a widespread, preventable, public health problem impacting all demographics of Kansans, Kansas communities, and residents of Hutchinson. And whereas, relationships are often counted as life's greatest treasures, and tragically, many are tarnished by one person's entitlement to power and control over the other, resulting in violence and fear. And whereas, domestic violence abusers violate an individual's privacy, dignity, security, and humanity with their intentional systematic use of financial, psychological, sexual, physical, and coercive power and control. And whereas, the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention report that 1 in 3, 36.4% of American women, and 1 in 3, 33.3% American men, experienced contact sexual violence, physical violence, and/or stalking by an intimate partner during their lifetime, yet only 1 in 4, 24% American women, and 1 in 10, 10.6% American men, experienced domestic violence and also reported some form of related impact from inflictions. And whereas, the above CDC statistic of 1 in 3 people who experienced this violence translates to a third, or 1 in 3 Kansans, amounting to over 1 million people and 35% of the Kansas population. And whereas, the U.S. Department of Justice reports domestic violence homicides comprise 14% of all homicides in the U.S., and that women are more than twice as likely as men to be killed by an intimate partner. And the Kansas Bureau of Investigation reports domestic violence homicides were 25% of all homicides in Kansas in 2018. And whereas, in Kansas in 2018, one domestic violence arrest was made by law enforcement every 43 minutes, one domestic violence incident occurred every 21 minutes, and one domestic violence murder occurred every nine days. And whereas, we as the governing body of Hutchinson recognize this violence is inconsistent with Hutchinson values and cannot be tolerated. And now therefore, I, Jade Pyrosté-Carvalho, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, Kansas, do hereby proclaim October 2020 as Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and I call this observance to the attention of all in Hutchinson. Do you like to say a few words?
Yes, thank you. So, hello. This is the fourth time I've got to come and talk about this with the city council. And, you know, my first year doing this, I was shocked, because prior to being with Bright House, I didn't know these statistics. I wasn't aware of this problem. But four years down the road, I'm still shocked. It's that it hasn't changed. When we talk about domestic violence murders, 1 in 4 murders in the state of Kansas is by an intimate partner? That's just, that's just shocking. Here in Reno County alone, last year, we helped people file over 400 protection from abuse and protection from stalking orders. That's, local law enforcement send people to us so that we can help people safety plan and crisis plan when there needs to be a protection order, protection from stalking. Currently, or just since the first year at our shelter house, so in the first nine months of this year, we have sheltered 73 people, and not surprisingly, half of those were children, because parents don't leave home without their children. 73 people. A couple of weeks ago, there were eight kids in the shelter house under six years of age. So we know what these little children have seen in their short lives. We have a, Bright House has a child victim advocate, and that we work with the kids to help them understand that the violence is not their fault, that they couldn't, that they didn't cause it, that they couldn't have prevented it, because often little kids go through their lives feeling guilty that they should have done something about it, they should have stopped it. So we're working on that. On the positive side of all this, we're really doing some great work here in Hutchinson, working with the students at HCC and the area public schools, and even private schools, and going in and talking with kids about healthy relationships, about safe dating, about just awareness of power and control. And before I leave, I want to thank the people that help us do this. When we have a victim in the community who has finally fled from violence, left home with nothing, no clothes, no birth certificate, no driver's license, no social security card, no job training certificate, I mean, they come with nothing, they just get out with their lives. We have so many people and agencies here in Reno County that help us help people get back on their feet, and that's what we, that's what we're all about, is helping people find safety and be able to start a new life after domestic violence. So thank you for helping us, and I want to shout out to Amy here, because she helps us with the ESG grant that helps fund the shelter house, so thank you so much.
Yes, you do. Thank you, Donna. Those statistics are heartbreaking and unacceptable, and we're grateful for all you do to help with these issues. Our next proclamation will be accepted by Andrea Henny, President of the Alpha Rho Chapter of Kansas Delta Kappa Alpha. Whereas, Alpha Delta Kappa is an international honorary sorority for women educators established in October 1947 in Kansas City, Missouri, with more than 29,000 chapters worldwide. And whereas, women in education constitute a great portion of the nation's workplace. And whereas, Alpha Delta Kappa members constantly strive to serve their communities and nation in educational, cultural, and charitable programs, leading to harmony, happiness, and peace among all people. And whereas, the major goals of Alpha Delta Kappa include giving recognition to outstanding educators, building a fraternal fellowship among educators, enhancing high educational standards, promoting educational and charitable projects and activities, and enriching the lives of individuals everywhere. And whereas, throughout the month of October, Alpha Delta Kappa celebrates and recognizes the founders of the organization. Now therefore, I, Jade Pyrosté-Carvalho, Mayor of the City of Hutchinson, do hereby proclaim the month of October 2020 as International Alpha Delta Kappa Month in the City of Hutchinson. Would anybody like to say a few words? It's a really fitting time to be supportive of educators, although any time is.
It is. I'd like to say, one of the things that Alpha Delta Kappa does is more than just getting teachers together and recognizing the work, the hard work that they do is, after they retire, it's like, what do you do with a retired teacher? Teachers stay together, and they do a lot. Alpha Rho here in Hutchinson actually goes out. We have supported very heavily The Closet at Hutchinson High School. This year, we are going to extend that to Allen and HMS H. We have given backpacks, we have given financial aid to a lot of different women and children organizations, including the Bright House. So we have continued to help children, as well as to help families with their growth and with the nurturing, and so teachers can be helpful and useful out of the classroom as well as in.
Thank you for this. We're very happy that you recognized us today. Thank you. We have a Facebook page for Kansas Alpha Rho Chapter. We meet nine times a year, nine months a year. Our programs are focused on one of five areas: altruism, personal enrichment, professional development, world understanding, and educational excellence. And we just spend all of our time just trying to help children and their families here in Hutch, as well as, our international group has a school in Haiti we're supporting, and other things like that, so thank you very much for recognizing us today.
Thank you for coming this morning. I wasn't aware of this organization, and now we are. Thanks for all you do. Okay, next item, please.
Item 5, oral communications from the audience.
This is the part of the meeting that we reserved for those in the audience who would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda. If you'd like to come to the podium, state your name and address, and limit your comments to five minutes, we'd love to hear what your thoughts are. Come on up, please.
Hello, my name is Doug Crowe. I live at 703 Avenue A, East, and my issue is with the water department. My property boundary is a lot and a half, which covers all of 703, and most of, which is now the address of 709. At one time, it was 705. It's believed to be changed somewhere in the early 80s. The deed, the deed to my property states a lot and a half, which would be almost three-fourths of the way that goes across 709. The water meter is at 709 is, would be on my property, but the boundary lines aren't recognized properly. There's also a third-party delay in payment of my checks or my payment to the city utility department, and I've asked the city, the police department, several times to help me with this, with this problem, and they say I need to deal with the bank, and the bank says I need to deal with the police department. So regardless, I asked two months ago when I was here to have the city manager check into it, and he first acknowledged that he hadn't no knowledge of this, and I still have yet to receive any calls or any letters, except for the letter of delinquent payment from the city water department. So my, my issues are, you know, they go further than the water department, but if we could start there, and we could disclose who the third party is that's delaying payment, maybe we could get my issues resolved. So that's all I have. I thank you for your time.
Well, I thank you for coming back to speak with us, and we'll definitely look into that. City manager?
Thank you, Mayor. This is one that we, we did investigate, and we further communicated with the governing body as to what the parameters were on this specific situation. There's a little bit of information that we can't release, because it is privileged information as an account customer, but there was proper cause to result in a, in further action being taken, and I'd be happy to share that information that was shared with you all, with the, with the customer, so that he is well aware of where we're at. I do believe that proper communications were held from the department with the customer following that internal communication that we had, so I think that's probably the extent of what I can probably say to that and respond to that today on the record. Thank you.
Well, thank you for your attention to that. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the council on an item that is not on the agenda?
Jesse Juma, excuse me, 2708 Westminster. I just wanted to recognize again National Hispanic Heritage Month, and just to let you know that Southwest Bricktown Park will be having their National Night Out tonight. Well, it's actually from 5:30 to 7:30. I have, we have like hundreds of tacos that we need to distribute, so they're free.
I don't think that'll be a problem.
So I know be careful with the, with COVID going around and stuff. I mean, you know, it's up to you, the individuals, to watch yourself, you know, wear your mask, watch who you're touching, you mean, you know the, you know the, you know the game, but you know, it's up to you to, to be careful of yourself, to protect yourself. We're kind of coinciding, well, it got pushed back, you know, I think it was originally in August, and, and you know, it got pushed back to October. Some groups have canceled altogether, but we decided to go ahead and go through with ours, so like I said, just be careful. But, and since it fell so late into this month of October, it kind of coincides with National Hispanic Heritage Month. Just in the future, in this park at Southwest Bricktown, is we would actually like to have an own, our own individual Hispanic celebration in that park in the future, too. So this kind of, kind of helps lead that way into that program, you know, to be separate from the National Night Out, which should be earlier in the year anyway, once everything COVID goes through and everything. The National Hispanic Heritage Month is a period from the September 15th to October 15th, and it's in recognition for the contributions and influence of Hispanic Americans to the history, culture, and achievements of the United States. And that includes like the big three, Salma Hayek, Jennifer Lopez, and Shakira. All, yeah, well, aside, you know, upon a side, what do you mean, like, actually, Salma Hayek has a, has a charitable work that includes increasing awareness for violence against women and children. And Jennifer Lopez has a nonprofit that increases availability to healthcare for underprivileged, underprivileged women and children, and Shakira has actually opened schools for underprivileged children, and she's a UNICEF goodwill ambassador. So I mean, that's just an example, and our own example is that, say, Councilman Garza, you know, he's stepping up here in the community to help out, and it just so happens, Steve and I have their appropriate faces on this month for that, so for Hispanic heritage. But yeah, so that's it. So, so come out tonight, we have a DJ still, and like I said, we have free tacos and free ice cream and stuff, so come out tonight, enjoy yourself, and just be safe.
Thanks, Jesse. We'd be happy to do a proclamation near September 15th each year, if that's something you're interested in bringing before the council. Thank you.
Hey, Jesse, can you hear me? Jesse, is, you're celebrating the heritage for Hispanic older tonight, is my right? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Do you have any music?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah, 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 yeah.
He was asking if he had music. There is a DJ. I think they're called like 620 Indie Mixes, I think, is what they're called. It's Dominique Siz and some of his friends. So there's a DJ out there, they'll have music, yes. Some activities for the kids, it's a little low-key on the activity side. Just to let you know, though, too, though, the park is still under construction, so be careful. We are, listen, I want to thank the Parks Department here in this city. You guys have been really good at helping us, and any time we called out for help on something, or you know, something to do at the park, and even the amenities that are going in there, you guys have always been well taking care of that. Thanks to Justin Combs and Steve Allen and his, their crew, you know, every time we need something, they're always there to help us. So having said that, there is new sprinklers that they're putting in still, and they are going to reseed the whole park, which, man, you can just imagine what that place is going to look like with brand-new, nice grass in there. But at this time, they actually held off on planting the seed, just so we wouldn't trample over it, you know, in case we had a good turnout tonight, and so, you know, they may jump on that tomorrow to start with the seeding and stuff, and hopefully that'll still work out. So yeah, but yeah, we will have music, and just be careful. I think there are some stuff still lying out, so just be careful, and it is okay to come into the park, we haven't seeded yet, so, so they'll do that afterwards. So thank you. Thanks to the city and thanks to Parks.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else in the audience who would like to address the council on an item not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none, please call the next item.
Item 6, Consent Agenda.
Any questions or motion?
I'll move to approve the consent agenda is presented.
I had a question, sorry, actually. Do we get to see like a sketch of what the fire dancer is gonna be? Are we just approving it without getting to know what it is?
Isn't it the one that's in front of Wiley?
The one that's front of Wiley? Because I wasn't sure. I don't know the names of the fire dancer.
It's not one being purchased by the city, it's just for the sculpture walk.
Where is it located currently?
I don't have that information. I don't know if it's been placed yet.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Yes, you're right.
Yeah, I'm like, just put back stairs, that's inappropriate. I don't want to just blindly approve something if I don't know what it is.
So typically, we have a public art design committee who kind of procures these, is that correct? The correct process goes through the process of determining which pieces will be displayed on the sculpture walk?
Yeah, I believe that's historically how that's been done, Mayor. That's my understanding as well.
Yeah, the art, public art group.
I don't know how deep you want me in the process of determining what I think is attracting public art that's being placed.
Well, I, I was under the impression.
I don't like the blindly approved things. I'm like, oh, sure, and then we end up, I just didn't want, I wanted to know if there was ever a sketch that's thrown in here if we're gonna approve it, or what the exact process was, because.
Well, I was under the impression that this was placed in the summer, and I was a little confused as to why we were approving it now, because I thought it was already placed, based on the contract. I mean, the agreement does say June 2020, so I was under the impression that this was the sculpture that was in front of Wiley. I don't know if there was just a delay on signing the agreements, or if the agreement was, has the incorrect dates on it, but the way it reads now is that it was supposed to be exhibited June 2020 through June 2021.
Well, the whole COVID thing may have delayed some of that stuff, so, you know, I don't, I don't know.
Mayor, we can ask Justin to come in. He probably has some additional information on this, and I know that he's in the building.
Okay.
I think he's watching the meeting right now.
Okay.
Yeah, check the conference room, would you, Chief? Thank you.
While we're waiting, are there other items on the consent agenda that anyone has questions
Good morning. Justin Combs, Director of Parks and Facilities. Hopefully, we're still talking consent agenda. I think there's like a 30-second delay, okay. So the license agreement is basically the agreement to allow the Sculpture Walk to put that sculpture on the city right of way. And what's happened over the past couple of years is Sculpture Walk Committee has separated themselves from art design. Sorry, I can't breathe in this thing. Holy cow. And so they're kind of an independent group. They've done their own private fundraising, they've raised all the funds the last two years, they've selected each piece of art. However, last year, they failed to do the franchise agreements. I brought that to their attention, and saying, hey, we need the correct agreements to put these sculptures on the city right of way. Again, they failed to do it this year. However, I caught it in time to get this one, so I asked them to do it for this one, and then hopefully in the future, we will continue to do those. So there's really no city involvement in this anymore. That's all been handed over to this private group. So I've been working with them, trying to get them to follow the correct process. So all the sculptures that are out there, we need to go back and get those agreements for this year. This was just the first one we, we were able to get through.
Justin, is there a way that that group can obtain a long-term franchise agreement, kind of like the utility companies do, so they don't have to come back each year?
That'd be a question for Paul, but what I've encouraged them to do, and I think this year was probably the plan, but because of everything that happened with COVID, was when they make their selection, just like Merrill Dye used to do, come to city council, present all of the selections they've made, and on that same meeting, then get those franchise agreements approved. So you're not just blindly agreeing to put a piece of art on the city right of way.
Yeah, we used to get pictures of all of those before we, like during approval.
Correct, yeah. And I'm trying to coach HTRAC and the Sculpture Walk Subcommittee in that direction, it just didn't work this year for them.
Okay.
Counsel, also keep in mind, these are not permanent exhibits.
Yeah.
That's why it's a license agreement, and that's why it's usually just one year.
Yeah.
We're just renting them for a year, basically.
That's right.
Well, I do appreciate the work that that group does. I know that, you know, the city used to handle that all themselves and go through the expense, and now it's being privately taken care of. So I appreciate what they're doing, and I understand that there are some bureaucratic barriers they may not be aware of, so I appreciate you walking them through that, but that makes a lot more sense.
Yeah, so hopefully, we'll, we'll have their ducks in the bowl a little bit better next year, and we'll get those presented prior to them going on display.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Thanks for bringing that up, Sarah. Okay, further questions or a motion on the consent agenda?
Move to approve is presented.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Pyrosté-Carvalho?
Yes, next item, please.
Item 7A, Consider Ordinance Adopting the Uniform Public Offense Code for Kansas Cities.
Paul Brown, City Attorney. For some of you on the council, this is your first go-around with the standard traffic ordinance and the Uniform Public Offense Code. These are the booklets used by our law enforcement and municipal court, and they're used by cities all across Kansas. The standard traffic ordinance is just what it says, every type of traffic offense, parking, driver's license, everything that applies to the city is in this booklet. With the abbreviated legislative session this year, there were no changes, so we're not asking you to make modifications and adopt a new, what we call the STO. Nothing to be done there. They didn't make any changes, they didn't get to it, so you don't have to do anything with it, and police and municipal court will continue to use the booklets they received last year. The one that did change is the Uniform Public Offense Code, which is every other type of misdemeanor that can be prosecuted in municipal court. Cannot prosecute felonies in municipal court, so it's only misdemeanors. And the changes that were made for this year really weren't done by the Kansas Legislature. And I'll go through some of those with you. The, some of it was just a definition change, like on explosives. Some of the more significant changes, violation of a public health order. Now, quite frankly, at the present time, that won't have any application to us, because when they went back and changed the emergency powers of the governor on the executive orders, the enforcement provision was a civil action by the district attorney's office. There were no criminal penalties. Now, earlier in the year, when some cities were trying to pass mask orders and other measures on their own, or they were just trying to enforce the county's public health order, there really wasn't a provision for that. So that's why the league's council has included this provision, because it is a booklet that's used all across Kansas. It won't have application for us presently, unless the county comes to us and say, we need your help with something that. Well, then we could help. Or if there's a change in the state law, it makes it clear that, that the ability to enforce that exists in municipal court. Before, there was a statute that they used, which was a real stretch in trying to apply that, and that's why they included one that's more specific. At the present time, no real application for the City of Hutchinson. Now, one thing that... Now, one thing that does apply is the selling, giving, or furnishing cigarettes or tobacco products to a minor, because it drops the age from 21, I'm sorry, increases the age from 18 to 21 for purchasing. And it includes e-cigarettes. Now, that is federal law. That's already been passed. It was done last December, so it's federal law. Again, with the abbreviated legislative session, Kansas didn't get to that. Now, as of the first of, first day of 2021, there will be 30 states that have passed this. It does exist in Kansas. We've got about 22 cities and three counties that have already increased that age. Everyone is gonna do that. And the reason they're gonna do that, because in the federal provision, they've provided a little window to adopt it. If you don't, they will cut all your federal grants by 10%. So just like increasing the age for consumption of alcoholic beverages to 21, or we'll cut off your highway funds, same thing's happening here. So it's not a question of if it's going to happen. It's happened, and it's gonna be adopted one way or the other. So the league council included that in this provision. The rest of these changes, the rest of these changes have to do with a state statute they passed that they don't want municipalities making any regulations about guns. Well, we don't. And I think it's a little bit of an overreach on the amendments here, because they amended criminal offense statutes to anything that spoke about the selling of guns, et cetera, and the possession of guns. But the statutes that were in there were exactly the same as the state. So it's a little bit of an overreach there, but I know why they did it, because if you convict someone under a statute of that type, that could be a reason to overturn it on appeal, because, well, in municipal court, you didn't have that authority. So I know that's why that was done. It's rarely going to apply in our municipal court, anyway. So the changes there are not dramatic. Main change is increasing the age to 21, and that's in the new Uniform Public Offense Code. And happy to answer any other questions that you might have.
Politic question about the tobacco. I know that was, that was signed by President Trump last year. So has, have local retailers followed those guidelines?
I don't know whether they have or not. When it's not in state law, the state agencies will not enforce it. So it could be enforced if the federal agents showed up.
Most of them have, have the bulletin up.
Okay, I just don't want to pass something.
Because they have, like, I know the ones, the one off of By My Work, it's got like, I know the quick shops aren't. I know that the one by My Work has a flyer up in their window, like their drive-through windows. So if you go through and get a pop, it'll say, as of this date, it has a federal regulation. So as far as I know.
Okay, good. I just didn't want any retailers to be blindsided, and now it's a criminal offense locally where it was.
I've had that discussion with the chief, and even when the council passes and it goes into effect, we would not jump out and start writing citations to business owners. They, they would be warned and notified that, hey, you can't do that anymore, at least in Hutchinson. You really can't do it anyway. But that, that won't happen. We're not gonna jump out and start, go to every store and start writing citations.
Okay.
As far as I know, a lot of people changed, like, changed it when the federal, because they assumed it was federal law.
Yeah. Okay. Further questions? Or a motion?
Motion to approve the ordinance adopting the Uniform Public Offense Code for Kansas Cities and authorize the, oh, sorry. Offense Code Cities 36 Edition by reference and authorize the mayor to sign. Did I do that all right?
You did, yeah.
I was from 36, and I was like, wait.
I second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Iris DeCarvallo?
Yes, next item, please.
Item 8A, consider approval and awarding of CDBG CV grant funds for childcare providers.
Good morning, Council. Ryan Veedlock, Director of Planning and Development with the City of Hutchinson. Before you this morning is a single award of $2,500 to Happy Little Peeps. We did put out a call for applications for childcare providers, and we actually did not receive one, but I went back and looked at some of the applications we received under our previous submittal that we received after the fact, and this was one that was in there. So took it to our review committee, and they agreed that, yes, that we should award this. So we, staff is recommending that we award the, this grant to Happy Little Peeps in the amount of $2,500. I did also want to give a little bit of an update of kind of where we're at with this grant. So the city got about, got $120,000. It was actually 132, but 12,000 of that goes to our grant administrator. So we had $120,000 to program for businesses. If this award is made, we'll have just over $27,500 left to program. We have, I have a stack of about 10 applications on my desk that actually came through with the county. And so we have also made a call out, kind of a final call out to businesses, and that deadline is Friday. So if there are businesses out there that are interested, please reach out to the planning department, and we'll get you the application forms that you need. I intend to bring this to you all at your next meeting, because the intent is I'd like to get these spent down as much as we can by end of this year or early next year, so we can kind of do a final accounting and see where we're at and if we need to spend the rest of it. We're working really quickly through this. We're, over half of the grant has already been awarded out to businesses. So we got just a check for about $42,000 from the state two weeks ago, and issued all those checks out to the first round businesses that have submitted out receipts. And we submitted another request for about $27,000 here last week. So this money is getting back out into the community and making a difference with our businesses. So we're very grateful to Department of Commerce for awarding that grant to us, so.
Well, I did notice that there were three in-home daycares in total. I really appreciate you going through that extra administrative burden of trying to put that call out to daycares. I know it didn't really reap a lot of applications because of the income restrictions, but.
That's the big part of it, yes.
I think it was worth, worth a shot, trying to support those daycares.
And certainly, if there are other daycares out there that, you know, believe they qualify, you know, please submit an application. You know, this, this final round is open to all businesses. We were just trying to do kind of a special attention on, on daycare, so. So, yeah, if there is any out there that may have missed a previous deadline or whatever, you know, get that application into us by Friday.
Do you have any knowledge of how the county's doing with spending those grant funds down?
I think they're having some difficulty. They, I think they've went out for now two or three rounds, and they've gotten a handful of applications, but.
Is there a sense that they may open that up to businesses in the, in the city of Hutchinson, or is?
If they, if they did that, it would have to come from the state.
From the, okay.
Because it was very, very clear, unfortunately, that, yeah, this, this money was set aside for everybody outside of the city of Hutchinson. So I'll put a plug in for businesses outside of the city of Hutchinson. You'll certainly reach out to the county on that as well, because I know they do have some funds left over.
Yeah. Okay, well, thank you, Ryan. Were there questions or a motion on the site?
I would move to approve the recommendation of the CDBG CV Review Committee to award $2,500 in CDBG CV grant funds to Happy Little Peeps in the city of Hutchinson.
I'll second.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Iris DeCarvallo?
Yes, next item, please. Thank you, Ryan.
Item 8B, consider 2021 memorandum of understanding with Service Employees International Union.
Paul Brown, City Attorney. Our last contract with SEIU was for a two-year period with openers for issues regarding wages. And as you can see from the proposed contract, we didn't get to wages, because we're not sure what kind of revenues we're going to have. But we want to leave that open, because, well, we're not to 2021 yet, and so we still want to extend that opportunity. And that's why there are these provisions in there. And if you've looked at your documents, at least on mine, it shows the revisions on the draft in blue. Maybe a different color, depending on what you have. But there's a renegotiation contingency clause, and the idea is that we can open this up, open up negotiations for a brief period of time, if the general fund cash reserve is at or above 4.1 million at the end. Now, we know our reports on our funding is a little bit delayed, particularly on sales taxes. It doesn't show up for two, three months later, which is why this provision is talking about the negotiation period being in February 2021, because then we'll have an idea of where we're at on the, on the finances. It doesn't, doesn't change the budget or anything. This is an opportunity to renegotiate, or to at least negotiate, so that we know, have an idea of what funds are available for it. And the, the union's in agreement with that. It provides some, kind of a short window, because when you're in February for 2021 wages, you need a decision made. And so it's a short window of 14 calendar days. If there's not an agreement, then the city council is going to make that decision. And so, and, and with it being in February, there will be retro pay back to the first of the year. They will not be shorted. If there is a raise, they will be compensated for that. And so that's, that's what we've agreed to, and hopefully, that's where we'll be at the end of the year, that we will have those cash reserves to go ahead and do that negotiation. And the union has approved that contract, and it's ready for council approval.
There was no major heartache in that discussion. That was the one where everyone came to the table, and it was pretty well-understood where we were at. We did not encounter any resistance really to that at all.
Kind of an odd way of doing it, but if they're open to it. Are there other questions about the union contract? Remotion?
A motion that we approve the contract as it is right now and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Iris DeCarvallo?
Yes, next item, please.
Item 8C, consider 2021 memorandum of understanding with Service Employees International Union Emergency Communications Employees.
Council, this is the exact same thing. And before I get away from this subject, just give you a status on the, on the other union contracts. The Fraternal Order of Police, we've, we've approved their contract. It has what we call a Me Too clause, so that anything we do with the other bargaining units also applies to them. Well, now you've passed the one for SEIU, that applies to the Fraternal Order of Police. Now, we've also been in negotiations with the IAFF. We're not at odds. We have talked to one another. They just want to wait till later in the year, hopefully, just to get a better idea of where we're at. We are not at odds about that, and we will resume those negotiations later this year. There won't be a lot later, but we will, we will get that done. Like I said, we're not at odds. I think we'll get that done as well, and it'd be similar to what we have here. But I wanted to let you know where those other contracts were. This contract with the SEIU, the dispatch unit, this revision is exactly the same. Exactly the same, same application, renegotiation contingency clause, it just appears in a different area of their contract.
Is the IAFF aware that they have the option to put a similar clause in?
Yeah, they, they just wanted to wait longer, and they told us so. You know, they kind of gauged the temperature of their members, and they, they just wanted to wait till later and maybe get, you know, so they can talk to their membership about, okay, what have been the, the sales tax returns, and have a better idea of where we're at. I anticipate that we'll, I know we'll have something before the end of the year.
Okay, okay, thank you.
I would move to approve the proposed memorandum of understanding with SEIU Local 513 Hutchinson Reno County Emergency Communications Employees Bargaining Unit for 2021 and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second.
Okay, motion and second. Any questions? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Iris DeCarvallo?
Yes, next item, please.
Item 8D, consider special alcohol fund awards for 2021.
Council, this is a, this is a tax. It's a tax on alcoholic beverages. Now, not, not package sales from liquor stores, but actually alcoholic beverages that are served, such as in restaurants and bars. The tax comes back to us. One-third of the tax goes to the general fund. One-third of the tax goes to, to the Parks Department, and then one-third goes to the Special Alcohol Fund with the direction in the statute that it's to be for the purchase, well, yeah, for the purchase, establishment, maintenance, or expansion of services or programs whose principal purpose is alcoholism and drug abuse prevention and education, detoxification, intervention, or treatment of persons who are alcoholics or drug abusers. That's kind of a wordy, wordy definition. And in, you can see in our proposal there, this is the, this is the same as last year. If and when you approve funds to be distributed now, they're distributed in 2021. It will be next year when they're distributed. Generally, kind of late spring is usually when, when that happens. And so we have the same proposed distributions with, with these groups. I can tell you from my participation in this, when we distribute to these groups, the Big Brothers, Big Sisters, Boys and Girls, Rise Up Reno, my idea on that is if you keep children and youth occupied and positive activities, then drug abuse and alcohol is, is not a part of that, and it helps to keep them away from them. So they're not out there on their own with maybe the wrong crowd. So that's, that's what we do, along with Reno County Drug Court. So we've proposed the same payments as the prior year. I'll also answer this question in advance, because I know it's gonna come up. I see the mayor looking at me. Yes, we do have the funds, the $50,000 for the Drug Treatment Center. We have that.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
That, that won't be a problem. But turn to that last page, the, the kind of, it's not, not a graph, but the kind of an Excel spreadsheet showing the alcohol program fund for 2021. It's got all the prior, not all the prior years, but a number of prior years, and projected revenues and that kind of thing. I think it's important to understand that revenues are off for this year. Now, it does not create a problem with these grants for 2021. It does not create a problem for the $50,000 we've pledged for the detox center. Okay, it does not create a problem with that. But it may be something to contend with beyond that, because our projections show that it's off about a third.
Well, that's to be expected, because bars are closed.
Bars and restaurants didn't do any business.
And that's, and that's the impact, because they are not allowed to operate at capacity. So I just wanted you to be aware of that. It's not a, it's not a problem at the, at the present time, and it, and it may be, you know, depending on what happens with the detox center. If it gets running, and we contribute to that, and it gets operating, there may be council input on the future of some of these funds and how they're used. But we don't have to answer that question today, because it has not happened yet. So at this time, we'd ask the council to approve the proposed alcohol fund awards for 2021.
Paul, do we still have a small committee that determines disbursement of these funds based on applications?
It's, it's us. It's, it's me, it's Linda, and it's Kathy Nysley.
Kathy, I love her.
And we're, we look at those, we receive the applications, and, and basically, these are the only applicants.
Yeah, I noticed that Sac. Yeah, I noticed that SAC no longer applies. They may in the future if they're operating the detox center, but, okay. Questions or a motion on the special alcohol fund awards?
I will move to approve staff recommendations on agency awards from the special alcohol program fund for FY 2021.
I second that.
Okay, further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Iris DeCarvallo?
Yes, next item, please.
Item 8D, consider bids for Apple Lane reconstruction project.
Good morning.
Good morning, good morning.
Jeff Peterson, Director of Engineering. Last year, we, um, submitted a cost share grant application to K, uh, KDOT and we did receive that for the Apple Lane project. And it was to reconstruct Apple Lane from 17th to 30th Avenue. And then we also would replace the existing timber bridge structure that's past its useful life at this time. So, um, so going forward now, we have received three bids from the, for the project and, um, they were open on September 15th. The low bid was from Pearson Construction in the amount of $1,215,774.10. The bid is below both the engineer's estimate and the project budget. And I think we received pretty good and competitive bids for the project. We then had to submit the bids to Kansas Department of Transportation for their review. Um, they reviewed and approved the, the bids and per our award of the project to Pearson Construction LLC. So, in effect, I, I recommend that the council approve the bids and award the project to Pearson Construction LLC in the amount of $1,215,774.10. Do you have any questions particularly on this one or?
Oh, yeah.
All right.
Talk to me a little bit about Pearson and other projects that they may have done in Hutchery.
Well, we haven't worked directly with Pearson Construction. They have worked with some developers in town.
Okay.
Periodically, and actually they're doing a lot of the work on North Wichita, all the K-96 work around, around the outside of Wichita at this point, too. So, they're, they're new to us. Um, and they're actually, that company is, um, when Cornejo sold a number of years ago to a larger company, these are some of the Cornejo people that put together this, this company. And they had a non-compete clause for a number of years and now that that's over, they're back in the, I guess, roads and street business.
Okay.
So, I don't have any qualms with their, with their expertise to be able to perform this project. So that's a good question.
I was just, uh, I'm thrilled that we got more than two bids. We usually only get the two usual aspects, but the estimate being so much lower than the engineer's estimate, I just don't want to see a bunch of change orders.
Well, I think, I was being a little bit safe on, on the estimate. And when we put together the budget for the project, it was way before we had, um, unit prices and any of those types of things. It's kind of a high level estimate when we put together those. So it's, and I was being conservative, of course, too, so. And I'm used to more of the in-town work and this is a little more rural, so I think we got good prices with respect to that. Because there's some, not some of the challenges associated with that, so.
I'm excited to see the work they do, because this could be a game changer, kind of an industry disruptor if they're, if they're really as good as the others and their pricing is so much lower.
So that, yeah, I think that'll help us and it might help us into the future with other projects, too, so.
Yeah.
But Jeff, a question on the KDOT's portion of the 50% of eligible construction costs. Does that include in the construction cost, design and engineering, or is that the city's responsibility?
And what will that represent, dollar wise?
Uh, well, that was the city's responsibility and actually that project was designed in-house. So, the city actually designed every portion of that project. So I don't have a cost associated with that portion, but, um, and that is not an eligible cost.
Right.
And also, construction, engineering, or inspection is not an eligible cost either for that, so.
Is that done in-house?
That's, yeah.
That was done in-house, okay.
Yeah, we'll, we'll have to hire a outside firm to do some of the materials testing as we do this, but, um,
Yeah.
That's, that's a fairly minor cost, $10,000 or less generally, so.
Jeff, correct me if I'm wrong, but you said something about a bridge has to replace some timbers on the bridge, is that?
Well, we're not replacing timbers, we're taking that bridge out and actually putting a concrete box covert in, in its, in its present location, so.
That's the bridge where the train goes over, right? No.
No.
Not, not on Apple Lane.
Okay.
No, it's, it's the one just south of 20th Avenue. There's that little subdivision that, it's off to the east and south of that subdivision. It's in, in the south part.
Okay.
It's probably about 18th or 19th.
Yeah, I mean, you really don't even realize it's a bridge.
You don't. It's, it's not, it's about three feet deep and
Yeah, yeah.
20 feet wide, plus a little less than that, so it's, but it's, it's in dire need of replacement at this point, so.
Do you know if the street will be rated for heavy trucks again? I know we have those signs up that it's not a truck route.
That might be a decision for us at some point later. And I'd like to minimize that, it, it, yes, it would be rated.
The neighbors, the residents do not want that. I just noticed that the signage hasn't been particularly effective at discouraging semis from using that road. So, just wanted to know if it's going to be built to sustain that way.
It'll be built to the, the standards we are right now. And, and actually, the bridge will be able to support those roads. It will, but we may take a tack to still limit truck traffic on that. It, it may be more of an enforcement issue than it is a, how it's signed and those types of things, but that's a good question. We, we kept it a, a rural type section, so it's not really, it's more for local traffic. And I know more people than local traffic use that. We have K-61 that's located west of there, that's really for the, built for the heavier traffic, honestly, but of course.
People like to bypass the highway when there's a line.
Yeah.
So they go down Apple Lane.
So anyway, it, I, I didn't, we hesitated to make it be able to carry more traffic when it's already a rural section and there's residences right off the street and everything, so.
Okay. Thank you for those clarifications.
Uh huh.
Happy to see this being done. There are further questions?
I would move to approve the bids and authorize the mayor to sign a contract with Pearson Construction LLC in the amount of $1,215,774.10, subject to compliance with all legal requirements. I'll second that.
Okay. Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Iris DeCarvallo?
Yes, next item, please.
Item 8F, consider 2021 residential street maintenance project.
Good morning again, Jeff Peterson.
Oh, this is, oh, what?
No, that's right.
Okay, well, I did two then for a second.
I had a question right away. So we just did a lot near Allen and, um, kind of in that 10th Street, 9th Street, over there near Adam.
This year, yeah.
Yeah. And this is going to be the next set that we're going to be attacking?
Correct, it'll be, the majority of the work will be in 2021, but we're starting a little earlier this year because we, we included, um,
I was kind of hoping to see more of the south side of town.
Well, we've actually did, this is actually the last section of the whole city that, to cover, so we'll, next, after.
There's still a lot of, some more roads.
And it's hard to keep up with all this.
So what is our plan on, um, I'm going to hit you hard on this, you know, it's roads. We have all those brick roads that are like this and it's going to cost a lot more money. What are, uh, plans on that? Because I know we've just, we're doing this here, which is, I, there's a perception in this town that we just keep making sure the same roads are nice and we never really attack.
Well, if you've driven some of these roads, some of these aren't very nice either.
Jeff, can you talk a little bit about how we, um, analyze the roads and make those decisions about which areas to cover each year?
In 2012 and then in 2018, IMS came in and, and, um, did a evaluation of all our streets, um, throughout the whole community. And, um, they came up with a rating system, which is from 100 to zero, of course, 100 being the best. In 2012, we were rated at a 70, which is a, at a good, I mean, it's a, it's in good condition. In 2018, we were rated about 65, so we'd kind of fallen a little bit. So we do use those and they do give us, um, recommendations on what treatments to use on the streets and those types of things throughout the whole community as an individual basis on like each street segment and those types of things. And we do take those into effect when we do some of our street projects. And we initially have been kind of following that around. We think it's important to cover, at least get through the first round of the chip seal projects for the whole community and then we'll start evaluating those a little closer and do more spot type things at, or spot type maintenance on those streets that are maybe falling behind or going to that. With, with questions with respect to brick streets, we don't do a lot of maintenance on the brick streets. A maintenance on a brick street primarily would be
A lot of money.
Taking the brick streak out and putting a brick streak back. We did that a number of weeks, years ago for the area around Hyde Park, because those were becoming really bad, too.
And didn't they, um, approve an additional special assessment?
They did not on that. There was that option to, to leave those brick streets and then maybe there would be a special assessment. Or if they wanted to do any more decorative type, type of things in that area. But we ended up just doing, going back with asphalt.
Ripping it out and putting asphalt.
And those, in those areas, so there was an additional one. That was just a, a specific bonded project, so. So there's not a lot of maintenance that goes on, on the brick streets, aside from if we have a utility, utility repairs or something like that, we, they go back and put the bricks back, of course, because that's kind of been the policy.
Do you factor them, I, sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, you're fine.
Um, do you factor the brick streets into the equation of, of which ones you're going to do a complete reconstruction?
We really haven't did a lot of maintenance on brick streets.
Well, I mean, not maintenance, but I mean, uh, I basically want to know if they're in your reconstruction queue.
They're, mm, they're, they're not real, not generally. Most of the brick streets are, well, there are some downtown in, in that area, but most of the brick streets in the residential areas, we haven't necessarily considered reconstruction costs. Those, those costs are upwards to 90 to $100 per square yard. And so our budgets, at least the maintenance portion of our budget, do not allow for us to be able to do the reconstruction projects unless we would bond those types of projects, so.
I see, okay.
Jeff, on the streets, I get 80% of complaints is street problems. I just, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yeah, 80% of complaints to me is street problems.
I'm sure.
Um, I just got one this morning when I got my coffee on the San Antonio and I said, I'm glad Mr. Garza's here, because I'm going to bend your ear.
Uh, how do you go about when people have problems in the street or an alley?
How do you, what do you, how do you do that to respond to them? Do you do it in?
That's actually, that's actually the initial problem, that they respond to the public works department. And the public works department, um, go out and repair those at those times when they get, when they get those, um, requests. Alley's are not, we don't regularly do alleys, grade alleys, it's on a, it's on a request basis. So that's, we don't just go around and cover all the alleys unless they get requested and then they go out and grading takes place. Um, if it's like a street problem, depending on what it is, it could be a curb or a pothole or those types of things. Those, those are put into our, um, process to where the, the public works or street department go out and then repair those when they get those.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm glad that we're doing some streets here. My main issue is budget wise, okay, we can't do that, we're going to have to bond that. I was looking at the other day about, um, the graph that the city put out on where our dollars are spent, right? And I would think, and I just find it unusual, the fact that our city spends more on parks and recreation than it does on public works, engineering, and economic development combined. Because that's what spoke to me when I seen that particular graph. And then we have problems about the fact that our road conditions are not the best. And we really can't keep up with them. There's going to be, even if we do a rotation, and the amount of time it takes us to cover them, there's always going to be ones that are degrading. And then we have the brick problems where it's like going over a roller coaster when you're trying to drive through these neighborhoods in the south side of town, which is often forgotten. So I'm hoping, maybe next year, we can reconsider the fact that we should probably fund our core services before our parks and recreation. And I'm not saying we shouldn't fund our park recreation at all, I just think it's concerning as a city. Like I said, that if you were to define what we spend in parks and recreations and our economic development, it's still less than what we spend on parks and recreation. And maybe we wouldn't have so many troubles on trying to get the right streets done. But that'll be with another discussion, I'm hoping, when we have our city council summit together or discussion between the long-term goals.
Which, just as an update to that, Sarah, I did reach out to the Kansas League of Municipalities for some suggestions on, um, different facilitators for, for those, um, those type of strategic planning sessions. And city manager is, uh, reviewing those suggestions and will come up with a recommendation and some potential times for us to meet, uh, hopefully before the end of the year, so that we can go into next year with some goals. Yep, mine.
That'll be great.
One last question.
The chart you're talking about separated out the capital improvement projects and bond payments. So when you see parks, there's a separate portion of that, so that doesn't cover everything that's done for streets and larger projects. I just wanted to clarify that.
No, it was less than a penny on that one, so if you still add them up, you might break even.
Jeff, one more question. Don't we have a truck that's basically made, a, a service truck that goes out and fixes potholes?
I think we do right now. I'm not really a part of it.
Yes, they're going around fixing potholes.
I'm not sure when that got purchased, but.
Yeah, well, we do have a specific truck that does that, because I see them out all day.
Okay, good.
And, and the reason I bring this up, this gentleman told me about a month ago about his problem in the street. And he said they still haven't, uh, finished that, so I'm just saying.
And I can't speak to that, because I don't, I don't coordinate that portion.
Public Works Director, yeah. But, uh, I did tell him that we have a, a truck that goes out and fixes potholes, so. And, yeah, okay.
However, if people don't report the pothole, there's no way they're going to know that the pothole is there. So I think it's incumbent upon the citizens to make sure that they fill out the pothole request form online or call Public Works. So, because I know, I know the truck doesn't just drive around town looking for potholes, or at least I assume it doesn't.
I don't believe it is, because there's other items that they need to be working on at the same, other, at the same time. Or they're already busy enough to keep.
That's correct, it's dispatched out on a specific list that comes in advance when the truck puts on.
Correct.
Jeff, I've got kind of a technical question, if I can.
Uh oh.
Uh, you list here, and we're familiar with some of that background of the processes, the chip seal, the double chip seal, the scrub seal, and the crack seal. How do you determine, uh, which of these four processes that you ultimately use on a particular neighborhood as such?
Well, we act, all the streets are driven and we, we check for a number of things. There's areas of the streets we know that are failing. And so those, some of those things have to get repaired before we actually do the chip seals. Or we have a drainage complaint or a drainage problem where water stands in the curb and gutter and those get repaired prior. But actually, they're driven specifically to kind of check out and we try to lump them in an area if we can.
Right.
And, and try to get, um, the most bang for our buck. So it's, if there's light cracking and those types of things, a single chip seal will work. If we're getting to be more cracking or some alligator cracking, where it's kind of, I'm not a good, but it's kind of, you know, a lot of cracks like, like that, we do, maybe do a double chip seal. And then, um, for the scrub seal, which we just started doing, last year was the first year on South Severance and South Halsted. We've kind of reserved that to where we have a lot more alligator cracking or it's a higher traffic road. Because I think it provides, uh, a, a lot better, uh, maintenance on it and the upkeep, um, is less going forward. So we have, kind of holds the road together and keeps it, um, performing like it needs to, so.
So the strategy is to repair the road when it's at a certain rating before it further deteriorates and requires reconstruction?
If we can get to, to it, yes, you're correct.
And that's how they're.
We try to do preventative, it's, it's an imperfect, we have 290 miles of roads and we can get to so much each year. So it's a, it's a, I mean, it's, it's a tough process. And we do spend more, we do spend a lot of time putting these plans together and trying to get coordinated, even just doing the repairs for each one. to get coordinated, even just doing the repairs for each one, so.
Thank you.
So you've kind of went through about half of my slides already.
I'm sorry, I know we haven't even gotten to your presentation.
So, so my, no, that's fine, I'm glad you did. I'd rather ask the question, I mean, answer the questions when I can, so that's not a big deal, so. So anyway, initially, I talked about our funding, and there's some of the different sources, the quarter cent sales tax, the growth fund, special street fund, and our street reserve funds, which the street reserve funds, they're kind of a dwindling amount. They're, they're essentially funds that we've had extra, like if our project actually comes in under budget, and we have some funds that remain from that, from that year. Lately, we've been trying to make the final project costs be a lot closer to the actual budgeted amounts, so we can get as much as we can done each year. So the, the two hundred thousand dollars this year from some of the additional reserve funds, those are starting to go away, so some, some of those won't be available for us, so our funding for those may be less. So it's important to try to figure out how we need to go forward. And we do try to look at different options for making our, our dollars go farther for the different things in our, essentially our toolbox that we can do for each street, so, and still minimize costs, so. And we've kind of spoke to this already a little bit, on the X axis or the bottom axis, there's the years of, years on a street, and then the condition is shown excellent at the top to failed at the bottom. So in the first fifteen years of a new street, we have about a forty percent drop in quality, and if we can complete preventative maintenance or our, our maintenance projects within that time, we can save some money by doing the, the cheaper, cheaper type treatments on the street. So that just shows, and those kind of sawtooths are like when we do maintenance, it just extends that timeout where we actually need to do a more in-depth, like a reconstruct or those types of things, or a mill and overlay. And it, it does speak to the fact that one dollar preventive maintenance can save six to ten dollars. And if you just look, I'm just going to give you a few of our little costs for our different types of maintenance projects. If we do just like a chip seal, it costs about one dollar and eighty-two cents per square yard. A double chip seal is about double that, which goes to make sense. But if we have to get up to a, like, two-inch mill and overlay, that costs upwards of fourteen dollars a square yard, plus or minus. And then a reconstruct, like I had mentioned earlier, it goes up to where ninety to a hundred dollars a square yard. So the amount of street we actually can work on is not a lot comparatively, so.
Jeff, let me interrupt for just a second. That kind of speaks to the issue of the brick roads, because when you do a reconstruct on a brick road, you're getting into the subgrade, the complete reconstruction.
Oh, yeah, it's the whole nine yards.
And so when you analyze.
And they've served us very well.
But we can't forget about them either. Oh, it's too much of a big deal, let's not worry about it.
You can't, in every city I've been at, it, it's a, it is an issue that you get back philosophically into this discussion as to how much more can you get by doing a total, an overlay, maybe a two-inch over the brick, which is not advisable.
And we have, lots of our streets are actually overlaid over brick.
When you have utility cuts.
But you can't do that with the roller coaster ones, you'd have to break down.
We'd have to, we'd have to fix those before.
When you get into utility cuts on those same roads, you then force yourself back into that same issue where you have an imperfect surface, and it's almost impossible to get it back to a pavement index score of seven or higher. It's a problem. But I can tell you, almost every city in Kansas or in the region faces this issue. It's also one where a lot of neighbors, residents will tell you that, yes, our street is bumpy, we don't particularly care for it when we're driving on it, but it does serve as a traffic calming factor.
Yes, it does.
And I have kids, so.
It keeps speed slow.
You will hear that, you will hear that from people that live on those streets. Please don't touch my brick streets. Yeah, they're not perfect, but they do serve as a traffic calming mechanism. And then there's others that live on that same street that absolutely, get rid of the brick, I want an overlay or a total new construction, including road based. So those dollars that Jeff just explained kind of show you the disparity that you get into when you do a total reconstruct, and that's almost always the case on a brick road. So most cities face this as a situation of.
How are we doing with the, the roundabout and the roads that are just west, southwest of that?
I was thinking about that when you mentioned the brick streets. You know, that, that grant was not approved.
But what are we still?
And so we won't be doing the roundabout.
So the issue on the brick roads that I was discussing, just briefly, let me finish that up. It's really not normally until you get a snowplow over the street and you break a snowplow off, that you really get into the hard dissection of reconstruction, or if you have an entire neighborhood that wants to come forward and do a special assessment for those additional costs, because they are very lofty costs. And Jeff has plenty of information on the roundabout, I'm sure.
So what was the question?
The, well, remember how we had applied for the build grant that didn't, didn't get approved? During those conversations with the neighborhood, they had expressed some discontent about the, the nature of their streets needing some repair, and some of those are brick on, along B Street, you know where, where I'm talking about?
Yeah, B Street down there.
So we'll need to have a plan.
Yeah. So don't forget about, you know, some of the people.
And we haven't forget, gotten about that, about that. And I was at the, I mean, Steve called me.
Some of the roads southwest of that intersection are pretty rough.
Some of them are, and you're correct. And we have, yeah, rough streets in a lot of areas that, that are problematic going forward, you're correct, so.
But I think it's important that, I know we're on the residential street maintenance project. We're kind of deviating on a lot of different topics.
A little bit.
But I think in fairness to the general public and the citizenry, it's important, and Jeff, I don't know if you have these numbers, of what our total CIP program is for street maintenance, including arterial, major reconstruct, that, that's a substantial higher number than this eight hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars that we're spending on residential.
Yeah, it's about two point five or two point six, and I don't have that.
That's right.
That's just from memory, which my memory isn't always perfect, but it's two point five to three million dollars, I believe, just on, that's just maintenance, that's not on reconstructs or anything.
It's not on reconstruction, it's just on maintenance, correct.
So I remember.
I think it's important to make sure we appreciate what our total investment is on our total street maintenance program, including arterial.
It stayed relatively stable, this is a little less.
Yep.
The, the residential is a little bit less this year. Last year was a little over a million dollars, and this year it's about nine hundred thousand dollars.
Nine, okay. Is that due to a budget cut?
It's, it's more due to amount of reserves we have remaining, because last year we put in about five hundred thousand dollars of reserves. We're, like I said, we're getting close enough, I got to be careful with how, I don't want to overspend the money we have to do that, so I have to balance that a little bit. When you have five, six hundred thousand dollars, we, it's easier to deal with if we have a project that goes over budget or those types of things. So this way, I try to stay within the budgeted amounts on the CIP, so. Anyway.
Sorry to interrupt you again.
That's okay. I might, we've kind of talked about the most part, maybe I'll go to the, the map, because we've talked about that.
Yeah.
Like I said, we do the crack sealing this year, this is included in the project. These are some drainage complaints that, or drainage, curb and gutter repairs that we'll fix prior to doing the chip seals in the residential areas. Those are the ones that actually impact the street. We typically don't have, we don't have the funding to fix every one where, if the water's still contained in the curb and gutter and not, doesn't get out and impact the street when we have standing water, those haven't prior, haven't really got, been able to get fixed yet. We're hoping to get to that point at some point. This funding is from the, actually the stormwater budgets, so we, we use that to try to improve those types of things before we actually do the project. And then, of course, we do the chip seal or double chip seal, the scrub seal, which we've used in a couple places, and it's, I think that'll help make some of our, this year we're doing it on a collector street, which would be more of our arterial and collector portion of the project, so that portion will be funded back into this project, that we're doing stuff on Halsted Street from twenty-fourth to forty-third. But anyway, here's what we're doing this year. A single chip seal is the blue, the double chip seal is the red portions, and then the double chip seal with a scrub seal is on the green portions, so. You guys have all had good questions today. I don't always have the good answers, but I try to answer them with the information I have at the time, so. I, I would recommend that you guys approve the residential street maintenance program. This project is out to bid right now, since we want to get some of the crack sealing done in November, early November, December time periods, and then in the spring, so we can get all of these areas cracked sealed before they actually start in the spring doing the chip seal portions of the project. So it'll, this project will come, or the bids will come back at the next council meeting, so.
One last thing I want to say.
Go ahead.
Is there any way that we can do a program that a person calls in for a complaint, and you can't get it for whatever, whatever reason? Is there any way we can call the citizen back? Because I asked a citizen, anybody call you, tell you about your, why we can't get to your problem? Is there any, communication is eighty percent of the thing? If you would communicate.
There, there may be a, a way to do that, and that'd be something we, we can talk with the public works department and see if there's, at least some type of response.
Right.
It might be an email, or it might be, I know some of our new website stuff that's coming up, there's some of those opportunities that'll be available where there's a response back. And we do try to respond to as many as we can, but we don't always get everybody to talk to.
Yeah, I mean, I, okay, I called in because I wanted my alley graded, so I filled out the form online. I got back an email immediately telling me that it was on the list, I got back an email when it was done. So there's something in the system that is generating those.
And alley grading has been a little problematic, because we were waiting on parts for one of our graders during COVID, it took a long time, so we're, we've been backed up on that for a while, so they're working to try to catch up on that.
Yeah, but, but there's evidently something in the system that does provide feedback to the person who makes the request, so.
That's good to know.
You know, maybe it needs to be tweaked, but it is there.
Yeah, and it, there probably is something that needs to, we just need to try to make that effort, Steve.
Well, a couple people I've talked to, you've hit a good point, because a couple people I've talked to, they just called in. So I'm saying now I have to tell my citizens, you have to fill out a form, am I correct?
Well, no, they, if they call in, those things get reported too.
Yeah.
It's, it's, it's essentially the same process.
And that call-in person will get a response back too, is the same as one that doesn't fill out the form?
I, I would guess, many of them do, so some of them probably fall through the cracks evidently, so.
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not as much of a part of that portion of it, but.
Look, let me offer that whenever phone calls aren't returned by departments, I'm normally pretty swift in receiving complaints on that through my office. I think I'm the very next phone that they pick up to call.
Some of them are.
And I don't get too many of those. There are occasions where some things will slide to the cracks, but as a, a general description as to how the department communicates, I'd, I'd have to say, based on my experience of not having those complaints, that it's got to be somewhat decent. Always remember for improvement, don't get me wrong, but I, I don't think we have a failed communication system at that, at this point.
Well, Jeff, I just wanted to say that I feel like you've been before the firing squad right now, and we recognize that you're doing the very best you can under the financial constraints that we've put in place for you. So really, do appreciate your work, and we'll look at what we can do to maybe provide, provide some different resources if we have bigger goals than what we've been able to accomplish. Appreciate, appreciate your work on this project. Are there additional questions or a motion for this item?
I will move to approve the city's 2021 residential street maintenance project.
Second.
Okay, motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Tyler Staker-Moore.
Yes, next item, please.
Item 8G, consider design agreement with H.W. Lochner for airport apron seal coat.
Good morning, Peter Miller, Hutcheson Airport Manager, and hopefully I'm not on the firing squad this year. This should be a pretty easy one, I've been up here and talked about these ones before. So in your packet this week is a, a design agreement with H.W. Lochner, whom, if you guys remember, is our selected airport design engineering firm that, that does the, does the engineering for all of our FAA-funded projects. So the reason this is in front of you this year is because normally this project was planned for probably 2022 or even 2023, based on the federal funding availability, but because of the CARES grant and the fact that the FAA is paying for one hundred percent of our current projects we have going right now, they asked us back in August if we would like to move this project up a year, because the funding that they had set aside for this project is now, or for the, for the project we've got going right now is no longer needed, so they can apply it to the following project the next year, which is, in this case, the, the transient apron aircraft parking area at the airport. So the transient apron, for those of you that have been out to the airport steakhouse, when you look out the window to the east, that's the transient apron, that's where the aircraft come that, you know, if they're there for multiple days, or too big for the hangars, or passengers and charter aircraft and stuff like that, that's pretty much where everybody parks on that area. So that's public use apron, that's why it's available for federal funding to, to maintain that. So the, the contract is for, what was it, forty-six thousand four hundred, not to exceed, that's funded at ninety percent by the FAA. That additional ten percent, so the forty, whatever it is, the forty, forty-six, forty-six hundred dollars that we will eventually be due for that project, that's coming out of leftover funds for another airport project that we just completed last year, the hangar two floor refurbishment project. We had budgeted, I think, about sixty thousand dollars for that, the bids all came in about half. And so the, the remainder of those funds are sitting in the account out there. And so when the FAA approached us in August about wanting to move this project up, we had already set the, the city budget for 2021. So speaking with Jeff and Finance Director, they thought, well, yeah, let's, let's move this up if we can, if we've got the grant match already in place that we can use, why wouldn't we do it this next year? So that's pretty much what it is. So, any questions?
Just a side question, since COVID, what has our general aviation activity levels been at the airport?
Sure, so we took a pretty good hit back in March, April, and at the first half of May, we were down forty percent over the numbers.
How much?
Forty to fifty percent, actually, March, April, and May, traffic-wise. When the, when the Air Force in June opened their flight restrictions, we pretty much had record numbers for about a month. We were having three and four hundred operations per day of the Air Force and flight training and stuff coming in. So the traffic has been higher than normal for June, July, and August this year. We're still about twenty percent below where we were this time last year, but the individual monthly numbers have been up for the last several months since people have started flying more, and the, a lot of the airline pilots that have been laid off, they're now finding themselves doing flight students and teaching people to fly and, you know, trying to keep busy with things. Unfortunately, because of the timing, our traffic is now down again in, in September and October, because we closed down two of the runways to finish up, or to, to do the runway three-one seal coat project. So we've only got the little runway open right now, which affects our traffic, especially the big guys, a lot of the charter, the Gulfstreams and the Falcons and those type of aircraft can't come into the airport right now, and they won't be able to probably for another two or three weeks yet before we can get that runway back open. So overall, traffic is down, but it was up pretty high for about three or four months this year. Projecting forward, weather and finishing up the projects, we're probably going to be somewhere between ten and fifteen percent below our traffic numbers for 2020 than what we're used to.
Does that appreciably affect our revenue, or?
Not, not so much this year, the, I mean, it, the, the fuel sales have taken a little bit of a hit.
Right.
There's not a whole lot, I think we're averaging probably about twenty thousand dollars a year from, from what we get from fuel sales, based on the flowage rates that we get. So that's probably going to be down, probably down to ten or twelve thousand dollars a year. Again, I'm, I'm just guessing, we could, we could suddenly sell a lot of fuel in, you know, November, December. But as far as the federal funding availability and stuff like that goes, the FAA is pretty much aware that this is across the board, traffic is down pretty much everywhere, so they're not counting traffic numbers this year, or they're going to use the numbers from 2017 and 2018 for funding availability for, you know, 2021 and 2022 and 2023, because, you know, airports are, they're kind of hurting everywhere, so. Yeah, we'll, we'll be okay.
Are there further questions, or is there a motion on this item?
I would move to approve a design agreement with H.W. Lochner for transient apron seal coat design services for an amount not to exceed forty-six thousand four hundred dollars and authorize the mayor to sign. I'll second that.
Okay, motion and a second, further discussion? Hearing none, please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Tyra Sticker-Muller?
Yes, next item, please.
Item eight H, sprinkler demonstration by the fire department.
So are we going outside to do that, or?
If it, if it pleases the governing body, that's something that is set up and ready to roll. It is it's a short distance from the room here, and it looks like they're all bunkered up and ready to roll. Good.
I say let's do it.
Okay.
Quick overview here. This, we refurbished this old trailer from our survive-a-live house. And all it is is a whole cargo container for storage stuff, ships and stuff. So we turned it into a prop we've been using around during Thursdays, the chili cooked off downtown. To show the citizens, it's basically a side-by-side comparison of a residential home. We can set it up for a kitchen fire, we can set it up for anything. Placed on the left-hand side is just like you have at your home, a couch, a chair, curtains on the wall. And we're going to start two fires at the same time. The right side has actually got a smoke detector on, and it has a sprinkler system in. And we're going to show you the comparison between the two of what we deal with on a daily basis in here. We teach our kids nowadays, and our seniors, or so, is people say you put one smoke detector in each house per floor. We want to have one if you're a senior, or even everybody typically. You have two minutes to get out of your home once you, your act, your smoke alarm is activated. Two minutes, that's it. You're going to see, we teach kids nowadays that that couch, that chair, everything you have in your home is a can of diesel fuel. And that's what we teach the kids, and that's a pretty scary thought. Everything revolves around response times, and for us getting unseen within minutes. And you're going to see how fast, we've got a clock over here, you're going to see how fast that fire progresses, and, and how bad it gets in such a short timeframe. And that's all about, why we can save buildings and stuff like that, it's all about having the proper equipment, number one, but it's all about response time. Even with our wildland fires, we, we get on them typically, we contain them to under ten acres. And that's, that's what it is. It's all key response time. And so you're going to see what happens here, probably within two to three minutes. The one on the left here is going to be totally involved, and just rocking pretty good here, then our guards will put it out. But you'll see the comparisons when we talk about places at your, places you go to eat, the guard departments that we have, some of the businesses, what a sprinkler system is really designed for, what it can do. And I had my way in Hutch, any new development, I think there should be incentives to build homes nowadays with sprinkler systems for a short amount of money. Cities do offer incentives for that type of stuff, incentive building the infrastructure, incentive building a new fire station, and another engine to put incentives in to make it more effective and efficient with these little things here. And so we're going to give you a little demonstration to turn over to the car marshal, and take it away. It's like you first said, demonstration here is this three-fold. I'm going to show you how effective smoke detectors are, how fast they work, how fast they warn you. I'm going to show you the effectiveness of a single sprinkler head in a, in a room. There's really no substitute for sprinklers. A lot of, even residential construction, they have D-systems, which is more about flexible pipe, just like your kitchen faucet. A plumber can put them in, it only has to be rated for them, but a normal plumber, once he's got the certification, he can put a sprinkler system in your house. And the other one is going to be running probably fast. I'm just here to say fire, fire doubles in the sun at least every day. You know, twenty years ago, you had twelve, maybe fifteen minutes to get out of your house. If your house caught on fire, you had that much time to get out. Any more, you have two to three minutes to get out of your house. And that's because of the construction methods, construction materials, and the water that's in your house. Everything in there is a hydrocarbon, gasoline is a hydrocarbon. But the material, the stuffing, just about everything with the springs, and a couch, and a chair is a hydrocarbon, it's a combustion. And that's why, that's why it grows so fast. Fires are, they regulated carpet years ago. Carpet, yeah, your rural carpet can't, can't spread fire. It will burn, but once the fire's off, it's moving, it's spread out, it won't cook the end. As far as I have to ask, asking everyone on that, I don't know why, I wish they would, they made, you know, safer cigarettes are supposed to go out, if somebody throws something in the kitchen, they're supposed to go out, how good they work, we still have certain fires that occur. Yes, ma'am. Actually, you will be, because your natural fibers, real wood, real cotton, stuff like that, it doesn't burn as hot and as fast, that's what we have today. Okay? Plus, this regiment, it used to be they made floors out of two-by-sixes, two-by-eights, now they have to come I-dee's. And it's a two-inch by three-inch piece of wood on top and bottom, and then a piece of plywood in between them. They're really strong, but they burn and fail a lot faster than, than salt and wood.
No flash, I'm proud of that.
We want our, we want a smoke detector on every level of the house. We've got one outside. On bedrooms, where you usually sleep with your bedroom doors closed. And if you have kids, we want a smoke detector in the kids' room. Typically, that's where kids play with them. In the room, if you will say, you have a detector there, it's going to be very, 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 okay? Here, go ahead and start it. I'll be around last minute. I remember going to my grandparents' house on Sundays, and there was a couch in the living room that had like a plastic sheet over it.
Oh, yeah.
It's like, you always sat there on Sunday afternoons, man, you never sat there any other time, man. That type of stuff was all made with natural rolls and natural fibers, and it, it didn't burn as fast. But nowadays, everything in everybody's home, the TV you watch and everything, it's just, it's a whole new animal in itself. So they're just going to light, at the same time, we got two garbage cans in there, and they're just going to light the garbage cans that have some paper in them. Twenty-eight seconds of the smoke detector, it's still hot. It'll be even faster in your house because it's a little breeze out here, so disturbing the smoke a little bit. Now, if this was in a house, the fire would actually grow fast, but right now, you can have a little bit of a wind, it's taking some of the heat away. The whole wall is missing. Once that heat starts bouncing off the walls, radiation from that, it can grow a lot faster. See it underneath the chair, there's some, some material dripping down.
Is there a question line for answering the situation?
Uh, this side we did, we actually worked, the other side, we just moved to the other wall. Actually, sprinklers aren't designed to put the fire out. A sprinkler head is actually designed to keep the fire in check until the fire gets there, but statistically, it does actually burn like ninety-seven percent of the time. And there was nothing special. A hose is coming off the car truck, but we didn't add any pressure to that. Just the safe pressure that you get in your house. I think fifty-five PSI is what I just. What happens is, yes, the fire grows, and it starts to heat up everything else in that room. If there was four walls, it's because that fire is now, the couch on the other side would already be smoking. It gets hot enough, it's called flashover. It gets hot enough that everything in the room that can't burn at nights like that. You know, the curtain just lit off on the other side? That was just the gas that's going across. You can see, you can see the smoke layer now, now passes, dropping with only three rolls, it's still dropping. That's why we tell kids, get down with your hands in the air before you go. Right here. That's why we tell you that, two to three minutes to get out.
Next item, please.
Item nine A, report of city officials.
Okay, Nancy, let's start with you.
Nothing.
No, I have nothing this morning.
Just hang in there, people. I know that, I mean, as being a parent, and everybody's stressed out right now with the school switching and, and coming into the holidays with everybody being so separated, and events, and Halloween, so I just want to tell everybody, hang in there.
Yeah, good advice. What about you, Steve?
Yes, I have a couple of things. First thing, I went to the police get-together at Allen and Samuel's last Saturday. It was a great event. Had a lot of citizens there interacting with our police department, met a lot of new officers, met some of the old officers that I used to work with on traffic lights and stuff. There was a great turnout, and I give kudos to that. Also, I went to the youth council, I went to one of their meetings, and looks like we have a lot of young, good leaders that are coming up, that are gonna make some good changes, not changes, but offer some suggestions. I was really impressed with the young people that we had, so I hope with, with, they have some good, DeJada was there, and also Glenda of the school system. They did a wonderful job of organizing this, and I really, I really, I really think that's great. Let me see here. Other than that, I'm, I'm really proud of our citizens. I went to the game last week, last Friday from Andover. Our football team is doing a really, really good job. They've lost one game, very tight game, it's fourteen to seven, and I was really impressed with all the Hutchesons who went out there and supported our youth. It's, it's a great feeling to be a council member of this great town and all the support that we have for our youth program. Other than that, I was sick a couple of weeks ago. That's a bad deal. Everybody needs to be, wear their masks, and I was probably one of the persons that didn't look at masks that way, but after getting sick, I look at masks totally different now. So we need to support each other and wear our masks and stay apart from each other, so we all can get over this. So, other than that, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen. Glad that you're feeling better, certainly.
Yes.
I don't really have much. As Sarah alluded to, our thoughts are with our school districts and parents and educators at this time, and students. If there's anything that the city can do to be of support to you, please don't hesitate to reach out. With that, I'll hand it over to City Manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Steve, thank you. Stole my thunder a little bit, but that's okay, I appreciate it. Youth Council, yeah, that's pretty exciting. I, I do notice that we have some, some youth there that's very energetic, new ideas. I know that DeJada's going to be spending some time with that group, so that's, that's very positive. It's nice to see that go. Several things. I know in the past, prior to COVID, the city had been in discussions with the owner of the atrium. And certainly COVID has changed the market dynamics, a little bit of tourism and how those numbers tick. But there was some leverage and mechanisms the city could use to incentivize ultimately private ownership of that facility and to make some improvements. There's not a lot I can get into without going into executive session. I know you all are going to have a lot of questions, because I did. I was not familiar with it. You guys, as new incoming council members, I'm sure will have some questions. Probably the best way, if there is an interest in facilitating this, in being a participant in revitalizing that community investment. There's various ways the city can do that, but one of the best tools, I think, is for us to tour that facility. And if you have already, great, but I have had communications with the property owner, and he's willing to come up and invite us through the facility so that we can get an idea as to its current condition and state, so that when and if those discussions go forward with the governing body, you guys will have a better idea as to what that asset looks like and some of the limitations of what it has to offer. We have not entered into any purchase agreement as of this time. There's, there's really nothing formalized right now. Safer to say that it's a discussion at this point in time, and one that certainly warrants you all in having background and information and an understanding of what that structure looks like. If there is an interest in doing that and taking that tour, let me know, or maybe better stated, if there's strong objections to it, let me know. Otherwise, I'll get something slated up. And I don't know if we can do it on a Tuesday, but I'll throw some random dates out to see what we can get.
Go for it.
Okay, very good. I appreciate that. And it probably would not be of an evening. I don't know what the situation is with lighting inside the building. I, I know that's probably not a real big issue, but it might be better to do that midday if that's possible.
Yeah, otherwise those halls will be pretty dark.
Yeah, it, it, it wouldn't help us, that's for sure. Also, Justin has asked me to make inquiry. Fund Valley, we've had recent discussions from two or three individuals that wish to purchase, acquire property from the city out there, and we want to tee this up like you would see in a typical RFP process. That has happened prior for this particular property. There was an RFP for it, I believe maybe a year and a half ago, maybe longer than that, but renewed interest has caused this discussion to come up again. And it's going to be enough of a discussion that we think it would warrant kind of a work session exercise with these potential investors to have a discussion here in this room and to work some of those issues out. We think we can do that on a non-meeting Tuesday, and if that meets the accord of the group, we can set that up as well. It would not be anytime real soon. It'd probably be at least thirty days out before we could get everything organized for that discussion. But we'd like to bring that back to you and set it up that way, if that's permissible for you all.
Sounds good.
Sounds great.
Very good. I believe that's all I have, Mayor. Thank you. I'll rest for questions. Thank you.
Okay, are there any questions of the City Manager before adjourning? Is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll second that.
Oh, we need a first.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay. Please call the roll.
Dave Line?
Yes.
Soldner?
Yes.
Bagwell?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Tyra Sticker-Muller?
Yes.
Garza?
Yes.
Tyra Staker-Muller?
Yes.